Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting. Today is September 1st and the meeting in session. And can you believe it's September already? And one year has passed soon. And today, tonight invocation will be led by Reverend Tracy Johnson from Murf Chapel's, okay, St. Paul M.E. Church, followed by Pledge of Legion will be led by me. Okay, all rise please.
Reverend, go ahead.
Let us bow here some prayer. Holy God, we thank you for this time. We ask that you will lead us and guide us in every decision that we make. Order our steps, that we do the right thing. We ask blessings upon the mayor, council persons, police department, fire department, first responders, all those, oh God, who are actively helping others in the community. We look to you for help and we know all the help comes from above. We thank you in advance for all that you will do. Continue to hold us and keep us. And we give you all the glory and the honor. Your servant's prayer. Amen.
Amen. And everyone, please follow my lead. Put your right hand to your heart and follow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
FC please. Assistant City Clerk, Royal Cole, please.
Councilman Costelanos.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Yeah. And City Attorney, do you have anything we pull off on close session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, and we go to our first presentation.
Testing.
Okay, I thank you. The first presentation, I want to recognize Mr. Mel, Henry Mel, he is the first person in March and starting donate the first 3,000 or 5,000 masks to the city. And I remember that time, the City Council and I asked about City Manager said, do we, we have some person donate the mask? And the City Manager said, that would be great. But that time, it's not popular for people to wear masks, it's the beginning of the March. But the person donate to the city, you want the city staff to equip with all this protection so avoid any potential, okay, with this virus. And really, that time, nobody really know, we need a mask. But we have that mask and then we right away give to the senior center for all the staff to bring this mask, okay, to utilize and to avoid any potential to get virus and give virus to our senior when they come to pick up the food. So I want to recognize the first person, Henry, you want to come up? Okay, and come, come, come next to me, I won't bite. Okay. Yeah, okay, I want to thank you. And I know after you donate about, I forgot, 3,000, 5,000 to the city to give to our city staff, and then right away you donate 10,000 or 20,000 to Queensville Valley. And I, you want me to call Queensville Valley for you to bring the mask to them? And I say, okay, why you want to give to Queensville Valley? You say, because your daughter born to Queensville Valley last year and you're so happy about their service. And so anyway, you want to say something?
Yeah, and I think I met Mr. Wu from the WeChat social and at the first time of COVID-19 come, everybody's very scared. And I tried to collect some donated masks for my country and send FedEx price to California by overnight. And totally, I think I donated about half a million to the United States. And in March, I donated about 100,000 and about 20,000 pieces to the West Covina. Yeah. But yeah, everyone tried our best, but still coronavirus here. And so every morning, I open my eyes, I see a cell phone, I see the increased cases. It's very sad. But anyway, we tried our best. Also, I take another 20,000 kids mask for the children's comeback safely from the left of school from today. Yeah, that's it.
I, I only invite him to recognize him because he is the first person to starting this PPE to the city and continue to, okay, and have a, like a starter for all the people, all the entity to starting helping and the hospital and the city. So that's why I want to recognize you because you the first started this. That, that time, we even don't know, with the City Council meeting, we don't even know how severe, oh, now we wear mask. Okay, and now today, not only he came, he brought how much, how many? He brought 20,000 additional mask for the children, for the children size. Okay, because, okay, I think this is easy to get right now, but the children's size is very difficult, you know, right? Angie, you know it, right? And now there's kids back to school and with their small face and this too big for them. And they say he, she say he, he will, he will come and he will donate 20,000 children's size of mask to the, our children back to school. So you have 20,000? Okay, huh? One box over here, you want to one, put one box over here so, so our public can see it? So I want to see, make sure we got the 20,000. I want to check it, I want to count it, okay? It's okay, and Mark will help out. Mark has a muscle. Yeah. Mark, come over here, join us. So everybody's, okay, giving a. Okay, okay, and represent the city. I really want to thank you for, to bring 20, this is 5,000, right? You have the whole six boxes, okay, 32 each box for the, 3,400 for the children's size. All children's size. So city, can you, okay, talk to school district? Okay, have the school district come to pick up how many? We have seven school district and we have a lot of elementary. I think they're coming back to, back to school pretty soon. So maybe it could, if kid don't have anything, so we have this for the school district for them to pick up and tell the city how many they need, then we just give them for free. But this is all from, come from Henry Mel. Thank you so much, Henry, okay? And Henry, no, not yet. Henry, Henry, we have a certificate for you. Okay, this not about 20,000 of your value, but this is an honor for you. Okay, so represent the city and the entire population and the mayor and all the City Council, I, we want to thank you so much for your generosity to put, not only previously donate so many of masks, now you even additional provide 20,000 of children's size of masks for our kid back to school so the parent can be kind of feel safe, that kid has a children's size of mask. Thank you so much, okay? You want to, you'll come over here, that's the pictures. I really appreciate it. See, that is what the city about, okay, people willing to donate and willing to help other people. And I represent all the parents and we want to thank you for your love to all the children and all the resident in West Covina. Okay, next one, I want to go to the census, okay? Census, would you come? Okay, and how long is your presentation? Not too long, right? Five minutes, perfect, five minutes. Okay, and I, I think people know how important the census is because census basically to tell, okay, the federal government, how, what is the population? Why is demographic? Why is the all different kind of people, right? And how was the income? They want to know the detail, no matter you legal, illegal, or anything, we don't care, okay? We just want people fill it up. Why? Because with that, we know our population, we know our city, then we can request the federal government, what we pay taxes. By the way, it's not a mercy, we pay taxes, we just want these taxes back to our city. Am I right? So I don't want to cut your thunder, so I let you speak.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wu, and thank you, City of West Covina, for not only having me here tonight, but also just being a great part of Census Outreach. You, I don't know if you know, maybe most of you do, you host one of our area census offices here in West Covina, they're inside the Jollibee Building. And we do a lot of our important work here in the San Gabriel Valley from there, so thank you for that. And thank you, Mayor Tony, for personally speaking back in February at one of our events and, and just helping out in general with Census Outreach. So just real quick, wanted to give you an update about the census that's going so far, it's, it's ending soon. But for those of you who are, are not familiar, or those of you who are thinking about helping on the next few weeks, volunteering outreach, thank you for coming. Just real quick, want to walk through this presentation and I can take any questions you have at the end. My name is Bellin, I'm a partnership specialist. And the one thing I want you to remember for the next 10 years about the census is that it's easy, it's safe, and it's important. Mayor Wu talked about why it's so important, it does have to do with funding, it has to do with our power and representation and, you know, our congressional seats are determined based on population. And of course, our money, like Mayor Wu said, is determined based on population as well. So the more money, the more head counts we have, the more money we receive from the federal government. In fact, there's about $675 billion every year that go to these, these, you know, these examples of community funding, police departments, fire stations, nursing homes. If you own a small business, you probably have used census data before, a lot of scientific research and emergency relief, et cetera, a lot of usages, public schools. And currently, actually, if you go back to the previous slide, just wanted to show you, as of a few days ago, the response rate here in West Covina is not bad, it's 70%. That's relatively high in, in terms of LA County, because you can, LA County is only at 62%, and the state is at 66%. So.
We 100%.
Yes, we all do, and that's why it's so important for us to have the West Covina Census Office here, that's where our census workers are based out of, and they're knocking on doors now. So just as a reminder, next slide is the different ways you, you have or you, you can respond to the census, the easiest ways by internet, that's the website right there, you could also call the phone number. And that's, these two options are available in 13 different languages, including English. The paper form has been sent out again, it was sent out in April, but last week it just went out again to households that haven't responded. So you have an opportunity to respond by paper if you prefer. But, but right now, the major operation that's going on, like I said, is the census takers knocking on doors. Anybody here saw a census taker knock on your door or a neighbor's door? No? Okay, well, we've been getting a lot of reports. I'm not sure if your police department has any, any experience with this or any calls come in, but just a, a real quick summary of what to look for in a census taker. They should have a government ID like this with an expiration date with the Department of Commerce mark there. They will not ask you for a social security number, they will not ask you for your bank account, they should not be asking that, only what's on the census questionnaire. If you're not sure, call that number right there, and the city has these slides, you can call that number, you can call the national hotline to verify if this is a census taker or not, or you can request somebody who speaks your language. And if you verify with that number that this person is indeed not a census worker, that's when you call your local law enforcement, West Covina Police Department, to report that situation. So I hope that makes sense. Go ahead, the next slide. Very important, all questions, all answers are protected by law, federal law, Title 13. We cannot share any information, any answers to any other law enforcement agency, not FBI, not immigration. So as Mayor Wu said, there is no question about immigration status, whether you're a citizen or not, whether you're undocumented immigrant, please tell your friends, your families, we need to do the census. We need to know who lives here so that the appropriate resources can be allocated. It takes less than 10 minutes, but it will indeed affect our lives for the next 10 years. So that's pretty important, that's really important. Any questions from the council or the general public? Yes. Good question. It's ending September 30th, so the last day of September. So until then, you'll get a lot of door knocks, you can, until then, you can also respond online or call by the phone, yes.
I just wanted to make sure to verify. These census, this is how most cities get federal grants, correct?
Yes, in terms of population, in terms, yeah, federal, federal money.
That's why I want to make sure that it's very important for everyone to fill this in because this is how we get grants, even the school districts. Have you also made presentation for the school district? Because the kids definitely benefit.
Yes, I have kids in public school and I always tell parents, in fact, there's a real quick, a funny story. A parent once said, oh, one of the teachers came to him to ask for money for the booster club, you know, we need the parents to pay, you know, 500 more dollars this year. And the reason for that is because the data from the 2010 census wasn't accurate, and so they were lacking money. So you don't want to do that. If you have kids in school, make sure you, you know, don't forget your baby, newborn baby, because it does affect, you know, our lives for the next 10 years.
And then I just wanted to make sure that even if you are illegal, to still fill, put this in because that is also important.
Yes, if you're undocumented, we, we need to know that you're here, we use resources, but we don't share that data with any other agency.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Yes, very, very important, it's very important, thank you.
And any other question? Okay, and, okay, a good, a quick question, and the resident, okay, anybody can fill out online, right?
Yes, anybody over the age of 15 at any house can fill out the census, respond to the census questionnaire on behalf of their household.
So, so on the city point of view, how can city help census, your staff to kind of joint venture, to have our resident, almost everybody, no matter who they are, document on document, to fill it up so we can get our money back? Because this is not the grant fund, the federal, this is our tax money, and we want the money back to our city.
Yes.
So what is the way we can, okay, encourage to join venture with you? And I forgot, you say when is the due day?
September 30th, so just about a month.
So it's only 29 days to go.
Yeah, yeah, and you have been helping, City of West Covina, you've been posting on your social media. And I know during the pandemic, it's challenging, but some cities are doing in-person events. If you have any more in-person events at parks, or if you have some kind of farmer's market, we do set it up where we have census workers come and stay there and talk to the public and enumerate them right there, or even in front of a supermarket. So we can do things like that, and I'd love to talk to your staff about possibilities.
You freely to talk to our staff, because I did, as a mayor, I did a video, I think it's three, four months ago, with Paulina, our deputy city manager help, try to push, okay, and the census, I know, we all know how important for our city future, no matter who you are, we want to get this money back to our city, okay, to have all this, okay, education and all the program, okay, but we need money. Okay, so, and if, no question, yeah, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
It is actually required in the Constitution, it is, the census is in the Constitution, and it is required by law to fill it out. So we, one other thing the City Hall can help is encourage your residents to part, to cooperate with people who are knocking on your doors, yeah.
Does the City of West Covina have a census site? The reason why I ask, because my facility used to be, they used to, my facility used to be a census site on our B top room, but after COVID, we stopped it, but just curious if West Covina currently has that, a census site where residents can go in if they don't know how to use a computer, they don't, you know, have questions, they need to know how to do it, something's there to help in person.
Right, that was an initiative by the county before the pandemic happened, it was supposed to be a kiosk. Right now, what the federal government is doing, we're doing the mobile census, which is what I mentioned with events in the park or in front of supermarkets. So we want to kind of respond to wherever there is a lower response rate. So we, whatever the city arranges, we will, we'd like to respond. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, gotta have that mask on. Yeah, at least we have a few thousand over there, if you need one, you can grab one. So much.
So, so here, I want to represent the city to have a proclamation, okay, and wish to have a 29 day to go, and we want to encourage people, our resident police, to fill it up, okay, all this census, because this is your benefit, and we really want to encourage everybody have a chance, especially the young generation, please, and tell your people, Peter, I need your help, okay, to, and fill it up, okay? Aaron, okay, yes, please, okay? And Joseph, okay, so let's put, huh? You did it too? And Yolene, right? So, so we can get this thing for the young people to fill it up, it's important. And I think most of seniors already fill it up because they have nothing to do, but young people, you guys have a lot of things to do. So, 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 oh, I'm in trouble. Okay, okay, no, yeah, old people have, like me, old people have a lot of things to do, okay, like try to be a city council. Okay, I'm an old people. Okay, so anyway, represent, I tried to dig myself out. Okay, so. Okay, so we want to encourage people to fill it up, and the city has a proclamation of this month to have this census to finish, hopefully we can get 100%, okay, at least 99%. Thank you so much for your come, okay, to help and continue to push, get this thing done till September 30th, thank you. Next one is equally important. So next one is, next one is equally important, is how to register to vote, and where to vote, and how to vote. And then, okay, because election coming up, November 3rd, and I, we want to encourage everybody to vote. The vote is important because you don't vote, you have no voice, you have no right to complain, you don't even want to vote. So today, we invite the county to come over here to tell us, because a lot of people, okay, don't know, it's this year, are we going to vote by mail only, or are we, do we have, okay, play the precinct, we can cast our ballot, so we want to make sure our vote count, okay? And where is the place? And where is your drop, okay, your ballot? Because a lot of vote by mail will come, what day vote by mail will come? What day, okay, we have a precinct, we can vote? And how to register to vote, why is the last day the people can register to vote? We really want everybody to exercise their right. Go ahead, county.
Thank you very much. So I am Jeff Klein, I want to thank the council for having me tonight to talk about the election coming up. We had a big change in March around the election, and those changes are still in effect, but we also have the pandemic now that affects how we roll out the election. So I'm going to go through all the different voting options and just everything people will need to know about the election. Maybe I could take this off because there's no one around, is that okay? There's no one around me. Okay, so talking about the election coming up in November, there'll be a lot of options for voting, it'll be a safe voting environment for those who want to vote in person, but one thing we're encouraging is vote by mail this year, and as many people may know, this is the first year, this is the first election that all voters will actually receive a ballot in the mail. You have a choice to use that, that vote by mail ballot, or you can vote in person if you decide not to use that vote by mail ballot. So we will be sending 5.5 million vote by mail ballots out, it's about two and a half million more vote by mail ballots that we've sent in past elections. And again, you can use the vote by mail ballot, or you can vote in person, but we are encouraging that as the safe voting, the safer voting option, but there are people who just prefer to vote in person. So that said, we will have safe vote centers, we'll have about 800 vote centers around LA County. We have some very exciting vote center opportunities this year. There's a lot of, obviously, a lot of challenges with the pandemic, but one opportunity that has arisen in, in terms of the election, is that now we have access to unique facilities like Dodger Stadium, Staples Center, the Forum, a lot of really exciting opportunities for voters to go and cast their ballot. We will be following strict state and county guidelines for public health, including six feet distance between the voting machines, sanitizing the machines after each use. We will have masks available for anyone who shows up and doesn't have a mask to wear, and all of our staff will be, say, will be protected as well, and I'll go over those details a little bit later in the presentation. We will have 11 days total of voting, so 10 early days of voting plus election day, so that makes 11 total days. We will have about 75 locations that start voting on October 24th, that's around the county, and we will have a total of 800 that open on October 30th, or actually, an 800 total, that includes the 75. And then we have multiple options for dropping off your vote by mail ballot. One of those will be expanded vote by mail drop box. We will have 400 vote by mail drop box around LA County. So you can walk it into a vote center, you can drop it off at the drop box, or you can mail the ballot back, it is postage paid. Those, that's what the drop boxes look like. If you've been down to our office, you may see one out front of our office, it's there permanently, but you also may have seen these throughout LA County. In March, we're essentially doubling the number of drop boxes available. So they are very visible, very colorful, we want people to notice them, and they're different than post office boxes. You can track your vote by mail ballot, one concern that voters have is they want to make sure that their vote by mail ballot is received if you return by mail or if you drop it off, and you can sign up for the ballot tracks program, or where's my ballot is what the state calls it. So I encourage everyone to go on to the state's website and sign up for that, it's a great service. Again, we will have a 10, it's really an 11 day vote center, it should actually say 11 days, or a five day voting period. So the 11 days are 75 locations spread throughout the county. We've actually adjusted the hours for early voting, it's now going to be 10 a.m. to 7 p.m., so this allows people who want to vote in the evening a little more flexibility, but election day is still 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. And we'll have a total of 800 locations, most of them will open on October 30th, and they'll be spread throughout the county. And remember, under our new voting model, you don't have to vote only at your assigned polling place, you can go to any of our 800 locations. So we are, Mark and I were already talking about, it's going to drive down to Dodger Stadium, as a true Dodger fan would do, and vote at Dodger Stadium, you could vote at Staples Center, or any of the exciting locations, maybe near your work, near where you live, and so forth. All right, so we will have our new ballot marking device available at all the vote centers, again, just some key features about that. It is a paper ballot, so we always mention that because we don't want people to think it's electronic voting. It's a paper ballot, it's fully secure, there's no internet or network connection. It allows an independent and private voting experience regardless of your level of accessibility. You can actually plug in your own accessibility device, and it even does things like adjust the text size and just the contrast. We also have improved the more button, I know this is of interest especially to candidates, but I think to all voters. So now, in front of each contest where there's at least five candidates, five or more, this pop-up will, will, will appear, and voters will have to hit okay each time to clear the pop-up, and that lets voters know that there's a lot more contests available. I know this was something of concern to city council members especially, but candidates throughout LA County, so now we've gone through extra steps to make sure people are aware of the enhanced more button. Also, we have our interactive sample ballot, that's still available, it was very popular in, in the March primary. You complete your ballot essentially either on your mobile device or your home computer, you generate a poll pass and you take that into the vote center, you scan it, and it pre-populates your ballot, it's a very quick, easy process. One thing you can do is you can do this in line if you're waiting to vote, hopefully we won't have an issue with lines like we did in the primary, we've taken steps to reduce that, but if you do have to wait a few minutes, you can go ahead and fill out your ballot on your phone while you're waiting. A little more about a safe voting environment, everyone should wear a face cover. Everyone should wear a face covering when arriving at the vote center, just like all public locations. And we will have those available for anyone who, who doesn't have one and shows up to vote. All our workers will be wearing masks, and they'll also be using protective gloves. And we will have gloves available upon request. We will be implementing social distancing. We've actually done three elections under social distancing guidelines because we have three special elections in March, May, and June. So we will have, we will be implementing those procedures moving forward and sanitizing the facility and the voting equipment. We talked about deadlines. It was mentioned, Mayor Wu mentioned that, you know, what are the deadlines? So September 24th, we will be sending out the sample ballot booklets. October 5th is when vote by mail ballots go out. October 19th is the deadline to register to vote. So if you, if you want to get a vote by mail ballot, you have to make sure you're registered by October 19th. If you haven't updated your address, we're recommending that everyone take care of that as soon as possible. That way, the vote by mail ballot goes out, it goes to your correct address. If you miss the voter registration deadline, you still have an opportunity to participate in the election. We will have conditional voter registration, or some people call it same-day registration, available at vote centers. And again, that starts October 24th. But you can do conditional voter registration up to and on Election Day and still participate in the election. And then, we're on all the social media outlets. Please follow us. We have a lot of information we want to spread. Most people get 90% of their information via social media, via digital media. So please share our information so everyone can be properly informed about the election. And then feel free to contact us if you want, if any organizations would like virtual presentations, in-person presentations, or any, you know, anything in between. And happy to answer any questions.
Question, any, any personal question? I, I have, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Is the county doing anything to deal with that issue? Because to me, that's a serious problem and could lead to a lot of voting, especially when it's all vote by mail. People can essentially vote for the old family and themselves. And I, I'm curious if anything's being done about it.
So, first thing I'll say, number one, is you cannot vote at two locations. So hopefully, no one's doing that, and that would be considered voter fraud. And if you do have any evidence of that, please contact us with that information. We can only update voter records when we're notified. So if someone moves and doesn't update their records and doesn't notify us, then it's hard to update their information. We do update records. That's why we ask for your old, your previous place of residence when you fill out a voter registration form. And we do replace your, we update your address. But there are cases where people don't notify us or whatever the cases, and that information doesn't make its way to us. I can tell you just from a high level, not to get too far into the weeds on it, you know, double voting and issues around that has been reviewed. We do look at our voter records to ensure that that's something that's not happening. And there, we do not have evidence of that. But if you do have information about that, I'm happy to give you my card, and please contact me.
Okay, I was mainly concerned about the voter rolls being inaccurate. And this is common. It's not a rare thing where two families are registered to vote at one house.
Yeah, I mean, if someone moves out of the county, for example, and they don't notify the new county that they had been registered in LA, we don't really have, we don't know if they're, you know, what their new address is or to remove them. So it is something that you see, but we don't, you know, hopefully, no one's taking advantage of that.
Hello? Okay, okay, yeah, see, I'm like a cement, again, it's not attached to me. But anyway, a quick question, okay? But this is voter, okay, fraud is a crime, right? So if people vote two times, what kind of penalty that will?
So, Deb, I have a pretty loud voice, so I don't.
No, the resident cannot, cannot hear, give to him.
Okay, so, yes, voter fraud is a crime. We're actually not an enforcement agency, not an investigative agency. So we do have evidence of voter fraud. We turn that over to the district attorney's office, and they are the ones who pursue that. So I can't really answer about the actions taken. It really depends on the district attorney's office.
Joey has a question.
I just recently learned on the mail-in, you're going to check off of our driver's license signature, not our voter registration signature? Is that correct? And also, as people age, their signatures do change. So do you want people to re-register constantly?
So the, the signature verification, how it works is we use the signature that's in our voter file. If you register to vote via paper form, we have a scanned copy of your signature in our voter file, and that's what we will use to compare your signature. If you register via online, the process is, pulls your signature from the DMV. So it really depends on the method that you use to register. It is true that people's signature changes over time. Our signature verification, it's called ASR. It's not, it doesn't interpret signatures so narrow that it, you know, it accounts for a little bit changes over time. If someone's signature has changed dramatically, I can give you an example. Someone had called me and their spouse unfortunately had, you know, their Parkinson's had gotten very severe, so their hand was very shaky. The best thing to do is fill out a new voter registration form, and we can update that signature. If someone's vote by mail ballot, the signature doesn't match for whatever reason, we do send a letter to that voter, and we ask the voter, you know, we say, your signature didn't match. You have an opportunity to correct that. Please send this letter back. So voters always have an opportunity to correct it. And very, it's very common for signatures not to match. More commonly is, let's say there's household members that mix up their envelopes. Someone signs on one envelope versus the one they're supposed to sign on. Those are the typical mix-ups, and we, we make sure we give voters an opportunity to fix that. Sure.
I feel like I'm a talk show host.
So just to confirm, you said we don't have to vote at our, like, assigned voting location. It can be at any LA County. And is there anything we need to do ahead of time? Or you can just show up to any location?
Yeah, you can show up to any location, and it would just be the same process, the same check-in process that you would have used at a polling place. You give your name and address. And we'll look you up in something called an electronic poll book. And what that does is it looks you up in our database, and we update our database real time. And this prevents people from maybe going from vote center to vote center to try to cast multiple ballots. If you drove down the road, 15 minutes later, we would see that you'd already just voted.
And it's the same process? You can take your mail-in ballot and surrender it there?
Correct. So you can drop your mail, your vote by mail ballot, you can drop it off at a vote center as well. So if you're a big Lakers fan and you want to drop it off at Staples Center because you want to visit the vote center at Staples Center, you can drive down to Staples Center and drop it off.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any question?
Sure.
Precinct.
The vote centers?
The vote center or, okay, of.
Yeah.
Understanding it's a senior, okay, place and shadow, am I right?
So I don't, I don't know, Lisa, if you have the specifics. We're still working on it, but I don't know if you, I didn't.
We do have the locations, and it will be in the city manager's presentation tonight.
Oh, 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 sorry.
That's okay. So the thing to note is some locations have changed just because of, we need more space. So we need a minimum of 20, 200 square feet. So if you're wondering why, maybe there's been some changes from March. Due to social distancing, we just need a lot more space. And actually, if I could make a quick pitch to anybody in the room, we are still looking for vote centers all over LA County. Again, we need about 20, 200 square feet. We need multiple days. If you do have a location, be as creative as possible. You can let Lisa know, and she can connect with me. Or if you have my contact information, please contact me. But we're really looking, you know, depending on the community, to come up with some suggestions. So it doesn't even have to be in West Covina. If you know of a, you know, community center, multipurpose room, or anything creative, let me know. Theaters are great. We're looking at the San Gabriel Playhouse, for example, maybe a vote center. So that just shows you the creativity that we're, we're putting into this. Exactly.
Maybe, maybe we can have information, go to West Covina City website with some of the timeline. I think timeline people, okay, want to know when the last day to register, okay, how to register. So we can maybe, city to do, we have our resident to check about this, okay, and where to vote and how to vote, and plus, where's the location, okay, in West Covina? Because if you live in West Covina, you don't want to travel too far. Staples Center kind of far to us, so maybe just go to.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And not yet, okay? So for your effort, we have to be equal, we have a proclamation for you.
Oh, okay. Well, that's very nice of you.
Yeah, I know. So don't waste your time, come to city, we still give you.
No, no, it's okay. Okay, let me put my mask on.
So, so, so represent West Covina, we want to, okay, have a proclamation about, okay, we have to vote. And we appreciate county come over here to provide the information, okay? And we want to, okay, encourage all the citizen, okay, and 18, right? Okay, and to, to vote, okay? And don't miss your chance to speak up, okay? This is your time, especially young people, right? Peter, you 17, right? Oh, sorry. Okay. Now, you wait for a couple months, maybe next election. Okay, so, so, yeah, huh? You 18 already? Oh, okay, that's okay. Okay, but, but, but Peter, okay, continue to carry on your, okay, passion, okay? That's what this is about. Okay, and so here we have a proclamation for the city to register to vote, and we want all the people, okay, the citizen and to vote, okay? Don't miss your chance.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
It is yours.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you.
So before I move to overall communication, I think, Lawrie, you have something to say?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, tonight, I'd like to, in remembrance of Audrey Lindberg. She passed away on August 24th, you know, she passed away very peaceful in her sleep. Audrey, you know, she was a very, very longtime resident and very active in our community. And I, in 2004, she was honored as the 2004 Citizen of the Year. And I'd like to read, read a little bit something of what was in that article when she was nominated. It says, Audrey Lindberg, dedication, community service spans an impressive range of interests from civil, culture, political, and fundamentals. She has the exceptional ability to bring people together to confront and solve problems on a wide range of issues. Her ability to identify their sense of problems and coordinate efforts to solve it is legacy. Reciting the resume since the early 1960s, Lindberg has used her knowledge and organizational skills to manage many different projects aimed at making her a community better place to which and to live and work. Not all of her service projects were easy. Two in particular were unpopular because they raised issues related to sex, education, and domestic violence. But Lindberg persisted because she has always believed people can be motivated to change their opinions and perceptions of an issue when they are educated and understand the sensitivity problem. Working through the PTA in the late 60s, she prepared a parent's study program on infectious venereal disease, a volatile subject, topic at that time, which led to the teaching the subject of schools and training for teachers. In 1978, Lindberg began volunteering for the YWCA of the San Gabriel Valley and ultimately played pivotal role in developing the organizational wings, domestic violence program. She was instrumental in obtaining funds for the YWCA childcare summer programs and helped fund two key fundraising events, the YWCA tennis tour and the women's achievement. While serving on the Los Angeles County Grand Jury, she chaired the committee to review and training of attorneys in the district attorney's office. As a result of her efforts, the training program was restructured and is reorganized as the best training program in the county. She also assisted in the state ride campaign that resulted in new laws for crime victims. Currently, Lindberg is serving her third term on the Citrus Valley Health Foundation Board of Directors and works through the Foundation 2100 Club to raise money for the cardiac equipment and emergency room. As chair of the West Covina Chamber Legislative Action Committee, she prepares weekly reports on major bills that is distributed to chambers in the San Gabriel Valley. She is also on the board of the Exeter Pacific University Children and Family Center. Perhaps foremost council member Nancy Manders best summarized Lindberg's qualities and leadership. Dedication in action. Audrey is a city treasure, Manders says. When she takes on a job, you can bank on it. She's straightforward and tells it like it is with grace and conviction. Now, Audrey will be missed by many of us who knew her, and I knew her for quite a while. And I want to say thank you for everything you did for our city, and God bless you. Rest in peace. Ms. City Clerk, would you please take note and send a proper response to the families for us?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Johnson, condolences to her family. And city clerk, please send a condolence from the city council and to their family. Okay, okay, right, next to overall communication, okay? And how many speaker we have?
Good evening, Mayor. We have seven in-person speakers and five telephone speakers.
So we go with the in-person first, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. The first one, please.
Our first speaker is Jerry Potchess, followed by Steve Bennett, followed by Robert Steele.
This is hard. Gets wrapped up in the earrings. Anyway. Good evening, council. I'm very sad that I'm here once again. I find myself requesting the city council support the ban on alcohol sales at gas stations. The issue is not whether a market, a liquor store, or even a drive-in dairy can sell alcohol, or what kind of alcohol they sell. The issue is not whether or not a restaurant or a bar can sell alcohol by the glass or the bottle to consume there or take home. The issue is not whether or not stores such as Target, Walmart, or Stater Brothers sell liquor, or what kind of liquor they sell. Those are smoke string, smoke string, straw dog arguments that the proponents make in order to get this ordinance changed. The primary issue, the concern residents such as myself have, is the increasing concentration of alcohol licenses in neighborhoods that have schools, churches, parks, our homes. And yes, it's also the loss of local control if the ordinance is changed. There is considerable policy data, academic policy, think tank policy, government policy, and newspaper articles on what happens in communities when there is an over-concentration of alcohol licenses in neighborhoods. And it's a real issue. It's a serious issue. And here's two very quick, basic examples. In 2018, the Daily Bulletin reported on issues associated with over-concentration of alcohol licenses in Pomona near schools. The residents and some elected officials wanted the problems addressed. It's not that easy once you start issuing licenses. In 2019, there were news reports that Fresno was looking for ways to reduce the number of liquor licenses because some of their neighborhoods had over-concentration of licenses. And those neighborhoods now had problems that residents expected the city to address. to address. The problems associated with high concentration of alcohol sales in neighborhoods doesn't just happen overnight. It evolves over time, and with each little business-friendly change a city council does to an ordinance. In West Covina, we are fortunate that previous city councils supported the ban on alcohol sales at gas stations. Today, quite candidly, it's irrelevant that the antidotes that we hear is that, well, the story goes, that once a council member benefited from the ban because he owned a liquor store. That's all in the past. That person's gone. They're not on the council. The reality is, the ban on alcohol sales limits the problems we have today with overconcentration in our city, and it will limit the problems in the future. Let's not open a Pandora's Box, where in a couple of years, smaller gas stations ask for their business-friendly adjustment to the ordinance for their size gas station. After that, the next group will want their business-friendly adjustment. Once the controls are lifted, it's gone forever. It's just not worth giving up local control on this issue for a relatively small amount of money. It's our quality of life. You represent us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Steve Bennett, followed by Robert Steele, followed by Brian Tabatabai.
Thank you. First of all, before I start, Audrey Lindberg is definitely a treasure in West Covina and should be sadly missed for many, many years to come. Good evening, Council and city staff. Obviously, I'm Steve Bennett, a lifelong resident of the city of West Covina. Tonight, I am addressing item number two, the possible code amendment to allow the sale of alcohol at gas stations. I find it very disheartening that this item was buried in the consent calendar, which gives you the ability to prove this, or to approve this without even a discussion of the topic. I hope some of you will have this pulled from the consent calendar to get a staff report and let the residents hear the full discussion. Last year, you already had a discussion on this very topic, and it failed with a vote of three-two. Councilmembers Johnson, Lopez, Viado, and along with Mayor Wu opposed this. Tonight, because of a request by Councilmember Johnson, we are now looking at this again. I've heard that this is the pro-business thing to do. I've heard that the city of West Covina needs revenue, and we must make this change. The reality is neither of those reasons are logical. At the last council meeting on August eighteen, twenty twenty, I went over the numbers of just how much this will do for the businesses of the city and how much revenue the city will receive. During those comments, I pointed out that only eight businesses, gas stations, will likely benefit from this change. I pointed out that if each of those eight gas stations saw an increase of ten thousand dollars monthly, or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars yearly, we would only see about ninety thousand dollars generated in sales tax, and the city would only see one percent of that sales tax money, which would equal only about nine thousand dollars each year added to the city's general fund. Therefore, this is nothing to do with revenue for the city of West Covina. We are talking about less than ten thousand dollars per year in a budget that is more than sixty-five million dollars. Not even a hundredth of one percent of the overall budget. This is nothing about city revenue. However, it is all about being pro-business in West Covina, while it is all about being pro-business for a small number of businesses in West Covina. It is all about eight gas stations, businesses, or only those businesses, because let us be honest here, the other businesses selling alcohol probably do not want this, as they will see a decline in business and income. In fact, we really do not know if the city will see any revenue at all, because the overall sale of alcohol in the city of West Covina may see a negative effect if the sales just move from one business to another. Mr. Johnson, you and I have spoken briefly about this, and you indicated that I had the number of businesses incorrect, that it is not eight gas stations, but only four gas stations. Well, if that's the case, then we are talking about even less money, only five thousand dollars a year in city revenue. How much time has staff spent on this issue already? How much do we expect the police department to spend on calls for those gas stations? Forrest Wilkins spent many years fighting to keep this ordinance in place by speaking at city meetings and circulating a petition with hundreds of resident signatures. I believe Mr. Johnson signed that as well. Fortunately, Forrest Wilkins passed away in March of this year. He was a good man and a dedicated community advocate. He hasn't been gone six months. It's only been a few months since his passing. Let's honor Forrest Wilkins tonight and vote no on item number two. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Robert Steele, followed by Brian Tabatabai, followed by Peter D. N.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Wu, Mr. Cromone. I'm here to offer a proposal for an idea that I have that could potentially benefit the city with additional revenue. And I understand that the city has a LEAP grant from the state to rewrite or revisit city municipal codes. The old code is written in seventy-seven. I actually am a resident since seventy-six, and this is overdue. It needs to be updated. Personally, I have an interest in this because I received from the city a courtesy notice concerning the city municipal code twenty-six dash four-eleven, which deals with canopies over your driveway. This is my driveway and my canopy, which is professionally manufactured, securely fastened. It's not a liability if the wind blows. Evidently, the city received a complaint. Now, within two blocks of my home, any direction you go, when I walk my dogs in the morning, I can see dozens of similar professionally manufactured, well-maintained canopies. If the city, during the rewrite and revisiting this municipal code, would include a provision to allow city residents to have these canopies, I have a, no shade, I have a driveway that faces west, my garage, in the summer, it's so hot, I can't go in my garage and work. If we would allow this residents to have these canopies and write the, revisit the code to just include a small reasonable permit per year, and I've talked to eight or ten of my neighbors that say, I'll pay a permit, no problem. They don't want to have to lose this shade for their vehicles in the hot part of the summer. Like I say, my garage is, I can't even be out there. So if they could address this with the LEAP grant, when they rewrite some of the other, I know it's mainly targeting the accessory dwelling units, ADUs, but it would be very easy for you to include option to allow residents to have these canopies over their cars and the driveways and pay a small annual permit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate. Okay, next speaker, please.
Brian Tabatabai, followed by Peter D., followed by Angie Gillingham.
Good evening, Council. We acknowledge the land and the native peoples to whom this land belongs as its original caretakers. This is the land of the Tongva Nations, and they are still here. We stand in solidarity with all indigenous people and their right to self-determination and justice. We commit to working toward the healing of the generational trauma, theft, and disposition native peoples have faced and continue to face. April fifteenth has always been a special day. It is always a day of celebration, a day that many of us pay tribute to an American hero, a San Gabriel Valley hero, Jackie Robinson. This year, it passed with my own silent remembrance, thinking the year would not have baseball, let alone a day to honor Jack. Thankfully, this past week, MLB chose to once again celebrate the man known for his stubbornness, competitiveness, but most importantly, his unwavering stance that America recognized him as fully human. His stance was clear, his stance was consistent, his stance was not for sale. As public servants, it is important that we are open. It is important that we consider facts and data, and that our decisions are moved by those things, while also staying true to the vision, and most importantly, maintaining the trust of the residents we serve, to not be for sale. And yet, here we are, just eleven months after this council rejected another push to change the ordinance, with words still hanging in the air. Addressing former Councilman Toohey, Councilman Johnson stated, "I wrote a letter to the editor, and it said, 'No brews at gas stations.' I believed it in two thousand ten. Here's my name on the article, and I believe it the same today. I was against it, and in fact, if Forrest goes and checks his seven hundred signatures, he'll find my signature on one of them, because I didn't believe it then, and I don't believe it now. So I will be voting no on it." And yet, here we are. During that October first meeting, Robert Torres illustrated the facts. Alcohol outlet density results in more violent crimes, vehicle crashes, ER visits, hospitalizations, and death. District One is oversaturated with off-site alcohol outlets. District One has the highest concentration of homeless. District One has nearly ninety percent of pedestrian vehicle collisions. Economically, the expenditures to deal with an increase in alcohol-related crime is far greater than any revenue this change will create. Again, the hiring of law enforcement is not a single cost. It is a long-lasting cost, a pension obligation cost, a million dollars into the future cost. Again, these are the facts. This is the data. So why are we here? A few weeks ago, Councilman Johnson's words were again in the Tribune. We definitely need the revenue, and I think this would bring a good source of revenue. We needed the revenue in October, but in October, you stayed true to the vision that you promised the residents of West Covina, the residents of District One. But today, without trust, one cannot serve. The residents of West Covina asked the council to reject any changes to the existing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyne. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Peter D., followed by Angie Gillingham, followed by Robert Torres.
What's up, everyone? Just want to start off by saying thank you, city council members, for the opportunity to speak. Also want to say that I understand that your job a lot of the time is worthless, and that threats or death threats are never warranted, ever. I know how it feels to get death threats, but I think you guys have been doing this long enough to understand that it might be part of the job sometimes. So anyways, I'm in school right now, and I'm doing online learning. So while doing my essays or any assignment in general, I have a rubric that I need to follow. So while, you know, looking at the points and seeing how I can get a perfect score, I decided to create a rubric and decipher how an ideal city council should conduct itself. So in creating this, I came up with three main points or components of a great city council. So the first component is the ability, I'm sorry, is the ability for the council to recognize the needs of the people and genuinely listen to them. So with this one, I think we can start off with the budget survey a while back, when the majority of West Covina residents stated that their, that the police services were their least priority. However, I don't think anyone would have known that, because the survey, number one, was not released publicly, and number two, the budget stayed the same, right? So also, let's not forget about the entire public comment fiasco a while back. I mean, a while back is in last week. So with those two things, I wouldn't really check that one off just yet. So the second one, the second component of a great city council I wrote down was the ability for the city council to be responsible with the city's money. I think this one is pretty self-explanatory, so I'm going to go on to the next one. Number three is the last one, which I would argue is the most important one, is the ability of the city council to protect its citizens. So the reason why I think this is the most important one is because at its core, you guys are here to represent us. You guys are here to serve us, and you guys are here to make decisions to protect us as a community. But when we look at things like the gas ordinance, right, when we, we vote to put more alcohol on the streets, which leads to more crime, which leads to more of a need for police, I start to question whether or not we are being protected, right? When we go outside and we see that our homeless population is booming and our finances are unfortunately failing, I start to question again whether or not we are being protected. Because when we begin to value as a city, long-term developments over fixing the problems that are right in front of our eyes, that are, that are, that I can see when I step out of this building, we begin to know that we are not being protected. So with all this in mind, what happens when you don't meet the requirements of a rubric is that you fail. But just like any F, I think there's an opportunity to bring your grade up, but it starts by listening. To you guys, it's not listening to the teacher, but it's listening to people that feel like they haven't been listened to. I know I'm young, you know, I'm energized, I'm optimistic, but, but sometimes I feel like I haven't been listened to. I feel like the city has failed me sometimes, too. And it's not entirely your fault. I think that it goes along with the culture embedded in the fabric of the city, and the culture in the city, I think, is a culture of polarization, racism, xenophobia, and a culture of hate. But I have hope that this will change because, because I have to. I mean, I'm seventeen. If I didn't have hope, then that would be a pretty bleak life. But, but what I'm saying is that it's not about me. I think it's about the people that don't have hope, the people that feel so underrepresented or misrepresented, that they choose not to pay attention to politics or care about it, the people that, that are, that don't want to watch these meetings, either online or in person, the people that every year feel like politicians don't serve them enough, so, so they don't feel need to vote. Those are the people that we should be reaching out to, and the reality is, those are the people that are living in West Covina right now. So without further, you know, I think the formula for change is hope, but mixed with action, and to be quite honest, city council, I think it's time to act. So I want to say thank you again for letting me speak. I'll be sitting right over there, you guys know, hopefully. Might make some awkward eye contact, I mean, that happens sometimes, but I'm looking forward to the rest of the night, and just remember to act, not for me, but for the people that feel like they haven't been heard or haven't been listened to. So thank you, guys.
Good job, Peter. Okay, I won't mind you stay at me. Yeah, okay, thank you so much. Good speech. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Angie Gillingham, followed by Robert Torres, followed by call-in Speaker James Toma.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello. Council staff, once again, I'm here to protest any changes to our existing code amendment for the use of alcohol sales at service stations. Alcohol sales have evolved. We're not talking about the old whiskey, vodka, beer, et cetera, that were in people's homes and used when socializing. Today, there are new alcohol drinks that appeal to the young called Alcopops. What are Alcopops? They comprise a widely array of low-priced, sugary, carbonated, heavily-flavored alcohol drinks. These drinks carry as much as fourteen percent part alcohol and come in serving cans as large as twenty-five ounces. Many have seen these brightly colored cans known as Mike's Hard Lemonade, Twisted, or Juice. They're in bright colored packaging, which attracts the younger crowd who don't want to drink their, drink beer or alcohol their parents drank. The industry refers to these drinks as FMBs, flavored malt beverages. They are a perfect storm to appeal to the youth-oriented marketing generation. These popular drinks are sold widely at gas stations outside our city. In the midst of COVID epidemic, alcohol sales are up. Women and men are drinking more these days. I hope I've provided you some information that I looked up, contrary to everything else that everybody's gone, come up here with wonderful information on why we, you shouldn't support this. I wanted to look into the different types of problems with, that are alcohol today that are appealing to the youth. Lastly, how would this improve our city for its residents? Knowing alcohol can be purchased throughout our city at restaurants, liquor stores, and stores that exclusively sell alcohol like Bevo, Bevmo, I ask you, do we really have a need for more locations to sell alcohol? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Angie. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Robert Torres, followed by call-in Speaker James Toma, followed by call-in Speaker Minerva Avila.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. First, I just wanted to reiterate what I've been saying for years now. I don't think it's a good idea to move forward with the ordinance repeal. I know that earlier someone mentioned about policy decisions and how over time they, you know, affect communities, so. Uh, I know that earlier someone mentioned about policy decisions and how over time they, you know, affect communities, so I've over, in the years I've been involved, I've always heard older residents especially say, oh, West Covina's changed and how there's so much crime and before there wasn't crime. So these are the types of policy decisions that I think slowly affect, uh, cities', um, environments, uh, health and safety. So the sentiment I'm trying to express today, I've, I've emailed a lot, I've said a lot, and I just don't think it's worth moving forward. And like somebody else mentioned as well, it's, it's about concentration, like I've said many times. I, I am not, I'm not opposed to the drinking of alcohol, you know, socially, but West Covina is just inundated with it. And it's not necessarily even, uh, against gas stations. It's, it's that we have so many that, at one point, let's say, in West Covina, I had like two or three, and somebody came in and said, hey, well, why don't we just give these other two a chance? Or why don't we give these other five a chance? And I know that when we did the 7-Eleven at Puente and Azusa, uh, when I looked at that, uh, there was about seventeen 7-Elevens within five minutes of that. So now we're, we're inundated, we're oversaturated, and that's the issue I have. I think that adding more is just, it's not a good idea for public health. As I've said before, there's numerous studies that show the more alcohol you put into communities, the, the more the public health suffers, the more the, the costs of public health suffer. And then, you know, now I think size might not even, size might not even matter because I know they, they talked about four gas stations versus twenty gas stations. But if you really want to be fair and you want to be business-friendly, you, you should allow all twenty to, so I'm assuming that all twenty are going to go now according to the fairness argument, right? Uh, so I don't know what, what defines the four, I don't know what defines ten, but I'm assuming twenty because if you really want to be business-friendly and fair, you're going to allow twenty gas stations to sell alcohol. Uh, there's also numerous studies, you know, and the, the sentiment I want to take from that is we just really need to show how does it improve public safety, right? What, what is it doing for the families of West Covina? It's obviously profiting the gas station owners and that's, obviously, you can't argue that. It's business-friendly, right? But what sort of, uh, benefits are the families of West Covina getting? You know, none. And, and also, what are the costs, right? There's not been, uh, a, a fine, uh, a fine analysis of all the costs. Like someone mentioned earlier, we're, we're going to get revenue from it, right? But is that revenue going to be eaten up by all the service calls? Uh, these, these locations historically have a high number of service calls, they have high crime, and our, our police officers now will be, um, overburdened with more enforcement. And as I, as I've experienced, everyone says, oh, well, that's ABC, that's a state, they have to enforce that. And then you, I call ABC and say, oh, no, well, the, we expect the local enforcement agencies to enforce that. And meanwhile, you have fifteen conditions that continually get told to me that, oh, these fifteen conditions are strict. They're going to be fine, right? But no one's enforcing them. I've called ABC several times, they have one investigator for, for maybe four or five city square mile radius and they can't even get out there. So they, they're leaning on public, uh, local agencies to do the enforcement. So that's, that's a huge cost. And, and there's no way that that cost is, uh, lower than the, the revenue we're going to get. So any revenue we're going to get, that's, that's going to get eaten up, you know, significantly, especially over time. So that argument, I just, I just don't, I don't think it holds weight. Uh, the regulation and the, uh, I already talked about that. So the last thing I wanted to talk about was the, the code amendment costs. Okay, so the gas stations have a right to do this annually, right? They have, uh, they can apply for the, uh, code amendment and they pay for it, several thousand dollars. So they could actually apply for it in October, I believe, I'm not sure when their anniversary is. But by doing this ourselves, we're essentially funding it for them. So we're spending public funds, our money, to benefit the gas stations. So if, if, if anything happens tonight, I would table it, I would reject it and just let them apply in October and give them their say, they can pay for it. But we're going to spend a tremendous amount of public funds. If we have the police department look at it, if we have public health look at it, if we have staff look at it, so. Don't, please don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, next speaker, please.
Mayor, we're going to our phone speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. James Toma, followed by Minerva Avila. James, go ahead.
Great, thank you. A good evening, uh, Council Mayor, this is James Toma. I'm a resident, former council member and mayor. Uh, preliminarily, I just want to note that I'm also very saddened by the news of the passing of Audrey Lindberg. Uh, she was a wonderful lady. A couple issues. First, the proposal to allow alcohol sales at city gas stations. When the city proposed this before, Mr. Forrest Wilkins, a resident, former police officer, gathered hundreds of signatures from residents who were opposed. Councilmember Johnson, who's now bringing this forward, assured the residents that he had been opposed to this for ten years and said, quote, "No booze at gas stations," unquote. When Mr. Wilkins passed away just a few months ago, his family was concerned that special interests would try to take advantage by bringing this back. And now that's what's happening. This has been the law for decades, the ban on alcohol sales at gas stations. And none of you campaigned to expand alcohol sales outlets. Nobody said that it's too hard to buy alcohol in the city. The gas stations want this because they want the money, even if it means taking sales from other city businesses. Because of the way this has come up, the issue's become more than just about alcohol sales. It's become a test where the residents can trust council members to keep their word, uh, to make the right decisions for them, even if they're not donating to your campaigns. Uh, second, the West Covina mall has been struggling for years. Big box retail's been declining due to the internet. And years ago, the city council revised the downtown plan to make it easier for commercial development in the downtown area, including a hotel. We had meetings with the mall owner back then and it was all very positive. We haven't heard anything about that from the city. On the other hand, the city's been pushing a sprawling, massive hotel development at the BKK site. This would go on hundreds of acres of open space to include natural habitats. The BKK site's also where toxic chemicals were dumped, where residents had to be evacuated through the gas leaks and where lawsuits were filed. How many lawsuits is the city already defended in? Seems there are more pending lawsuits on tonight's agenda from former city employees. By pursuing a hotel development at BKK, you're creating resident opposition, anger, protests, and likely lawsuits. And for what? To cause traffic, destruction of natural habitat, a nuisance for neighbors from miles around, and unknown health impacts. At the mall, you have a commercial site that's perfect for development because it's already zoned and used for commercial use. You also have a state housing requirement that it can help meet. Or will you impact the single-family neighborhoods to meet those requirements? Sears is closed, Kmart's closed, other retail will likely follow. Are you going to wait until it becomes a ghost mall to do something? And let's be clear, selling open space at BKK will not save the city's finances. The city sold land at the Easton Center just a few months ago for a couple million dollars. Where's that money now? It seems that it went into the general operating budget and it's already gone. If the city is against the mall redevelopment, explain why. If the mall needs capital, go to the developer at the BKK site. They and the city keep saying how much money they're willing to spend. Move the BKK development to the mall, where a hotel is already planned for. It will cost the developer less money and the city less grief. It's an obvious solution presented for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, James. Uh, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Minerva Avila, followed by Chris Miller, followed by Eduardo. Go ahead, Minerva.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I'm Minerva Avila, West Covina resident. I live in District Four. My emails with questions regarding, uh, the BKK landfill generally go unanswered. I hope to get answers here tonight. I have many questions, but tonight I'll just ask a couple, which have been previously asked before via email. CalRecycle is one of the regulatory agencies that oversees the BKK landfill site. The city received a letter from CalRecycle dated August 30th, 2019. Yes, over a year ago now. The letter references a report titled, quote, "Staff Report: Landfill Gas Sampling and Laboratory Analysis, Class III Landfill Gas Compliance Wells," unquote. The report is dated July 2019. The, this report, to quote directly from the letter, quote, "establishes that based upon the age and organic constituency of the sampled gas located on the northwest perimeter of the landfill, the majority of methane found can be traced directly to the waste decomposition process and not to natural occurring gas deposits," unquote. In other words, the gas to the west of the landfill is from decomposing trash and not naturally occurring methane as one spot. So this is a problem. Furthermore, because these gas concentrations now exceed the regulatory limit, the northwestern areas of the Class III landfill are now subject to the compliance requirements of Title 27 California Code of Regulations, Section, Section 20921. The letter also points out, this is all from the letter from, uh, CalRecycle to the city. The letter also points out the, quote, inadequacies of the current landfill gas monitoring system, unquote. So basically, to summarize, there's a concern with the origin of the methane gas, the concentration level, and the gas monitoring system. All of this, of course, is very worrisome. So what has the city done to address these issues? It has been a year since the letter. And isn't it the city's responsibility to inform residents about these issues? This could potentially affect the health of residents. So if someone please, the city, um, answer these questions, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Minerva. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Chris Miller, followed by Eduardo, followed by JD. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Council. Mayor Wu, City Manager. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about Agenda Item 8. In talking with a former employee of West Covina, he remembers the best he could that there were three janitors employed by the city prior to layoffs that happened a few years ago. Which sounds about right because in the office building I'm at, which is about 150,000 square feet, they have three janitors employed to clean the building every night. What I'm amazed at is the TNM not-to-exceed contract the city set up prior to COVID and what they're asking it to be reduced by. Now, the reduction is to not clean the city maintenance yard, Cameron Community Center, Shadow Oak, the Recreation Center, Palm View Recreation Center, and the Senior Citizen Center, which I'm assuming is over at, uh, by Berenca. The reduction is $12,600 a month. The remaining contract amount is $68,000. Six hu- $68,600, which means the prior contract was, uh, $81,200 or 9,007, or, sorry, 94, uh, or $974,000 a year, just under a million dollars. Now, Letty and Dario, you both ran to be fiscally responsible for the city. How is this contract at all fiscally responsible? In 2015, a lead maintenance worker made $55,000 a year with benefits up to 75 to 85 based on transparent California. A Class II maintenance worker made $44,000. A Class I, $22,000. Now, for argument's sake, let's figure that those three individuals with benefits make $100,000. So their pay plus their benefits package is $100,000. So you're telling me that, that $300,000 minus the $974,000, we're paying $674,000 on toilet paper, paper towels, cleaners, gloves, masks, and trash bags? I don't think so. Please enlighten us, City Manager. Give us a breakdown of what is actually spent in labor and materials and what was paid to date by United Maintenance.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, speaker is Eduardo, followed by JD. Go ahead, Eduardo.
Hello, uh, good evening. My name is Eduardo. Uh, West Covina resident. Um, I know the challenge that everyone there faces, um, regarding, you know, what's best for the community and the city. So I just want to shed light, um, on some positive things. Um, I want to commend, uh, Mr., the mayor, Mr. Wu, um, for his, um, recent works regarding the pension refinance. Now, I am by no means a math major, but I do understand now that the 3.7% interest rate, um, from the 204.1 million, uh, lease revenue bond is substantially le- a lot less than the 7% uh, that the city currently pays, uh, CalPERS. So I just, I mean, and I understand the over, um, all bigger picture here is that if you have uh, really driven and motivated employees to stay because this is going to be something that is going to affect West Covina for thirty-plus years. And so I understand the bigger picture regarding the amount of accountability, accountability, um, for this movement. Because if you have, uh, employees that really understand the importance of their job, it's just ultimately, it's going to affect, uh, the city of West Covina in so many areas. Um, and so I just wanted to go ahead and, and give some praise to the efforts of, of Mr. Mayor. And on a personal note, um, I do want to announce that, uh, a few months ago, I did have an issue. Um, I'm off of 833 South Van Horn in West Covina, uh, close to the mall, where we had some, uh, for lack of a better way to put it, some, I guess you can call them vagrants, uh, roaming around the front yard of the property. And they were able to open a, uh, fence um, that led to the street. And we were able, we would notice a lot of foot traffic and we slowly started to notice, um, syringes leapt around the street. And, um, you know, with kids around, I immediately contacted the city and the city got right on it and, um, provided a lot of assistance. Now there's, um, constant control and the situation was really resolved and cleaned up. So I really want to give a shout out to, to your efforts, everyone's efforts, they're on board. And, um, I just want to give you, uh, some praise on that. I know it's really difficult. You guys get a lot of challenging questions and situations, so I just want to shed light, um, on some positivity regarding you guys' efforts. And lastly, uh, and more importantly, I just want to pray that everyone stay healthy, everyone stay, uh, safe and, uh, go Dodgers. Let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. Okay, and I just want to say this, it's not me, okay? This is a teamwork, it's a city council, city manager and the staff, okay? I, I want to thank city manager to bring this to city council to approve, okay? This is joint teamwork to lower the expenditure almost 50%. So, okay, this is an entire city council need this credit, uh, not only me. So, uh, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is JD.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. Uh, forgive me, I'm a little nervous, haven't done this in a, in a bit. Thank you. Um, I do have something to say, uh, if it pleases the Council. I'm struggling to understand why one Mother I, Mother May I, made by Councilman Johnson, was denied while this one tonight was open to discussion. The first Mother May I had the support of the residents of West Covina. That Mother May I had to do with the tax initiative. It was resoundingly denied by this council with no whys or any reason as to why it was den- uh, Mr. Johnson's Mother May I was denied. Yet this one, as I said, we're here tonight in entertaining it. Now, in addition to that conflict that I'm trying to resolve, I als- I'm also here to hear Mr. Johnson explain Johnson explain possibly why he changed his position, why he once didn't support this and he now does. Certainly, I've heard that he received contributions from his, from these individuals that are in support of selling alcohol in the city, so the optics is not good. So I'm really hoping, Mr. Johnson, that you don't hide behind your mask out there on the periphery and you step up and do what this council has not done since its first day, and that's provide an explanation for why you're deciding to go against the will of the people. Thank you.
JD, thank you so much. Okay, yeah. Okay, I just want to explain to you the Mother May I, why sometimes this, you need to three vote, okay? So, for example, if somebody have a Mother May I, if somebody against, then we need to vote, okay? Please, okay? I just want to explain to you.
I want to listen.
Yeah, and then sometimes when people have a Mother May I, nobody against, then we are going to approve. So most of the time, some is not controversial, people will say, okay, that's, okay, then that's why it will pass, going to the city to research and bring back for discussion. And the last time when Johnson, okay, Councilman Johnson, okay, raised this Mother May I, I against, then we have to go to the vote, okay? And the vote is 3-2, so meaning what? This make Mother May I become a discussion for tonight. So meaning it must always a three vote from five City Council to make us a case. So if nobody supports this, then it failed from the beginning. It happened to me, I have a Mother May I, nobody second, then it failed, okay? So it's gone, but if I have a Mother May I, nobody against, and everybody, okay, it's kind of 5-0, then we don't need to, so this is the process.
And I understand that process, and thank you for explaining it to me, but I'd just like to make one last distinction, that the first Mother May I had the support of the residents for it to go forward, for it to be heard. This Mother May I does not have the support of the residents, yet you've chosen to move, at least contemplate it. So that's my, that's my.
Thank you, JD. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, and any other speaker? No? And any resident want to address Council? Sarah, you're here, want to speak to us? I know you always have a lot of things. Hey, don't, don't, don't just make it up just because you show up, but welcome to say something, okay? You need to fill out the yellow card if you don't mind.
Oh, I will.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
No, for the gas station thing, I'm probably the only one in the room that really doesn't care. I mean, I'm libertarianist.
It's a freedom of speech.
I don't believe in government control, so I wouldn't mind if you guys voted for it, so that's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, hey, it's a freedom of speech. Everybody welcome to speak in different angle. And any other, Aaron? Come. Peter say something, you want to say something? Yusuf? Sure? And Yuli? No? Anybody? Jim? Jim, you over here? Man, I want more. Sure you don't want to speak? Okay, I want to close. One, two, three. Okay, Glenn, you're here. Is that you?
Yeah, I want your glass.
Yeah, you have a mask. See, I can still recognize you even you have a mask on. Okay, I'm going to close. One, two, three, and overall communication close. I can bring to City Manager to answer some, okay, question. Canopy, would you please answer that? BKK regarding some contamination that Minova talking about, janitorial, Chris Miller talking about has issue with number, okay? And we will talk about selling alcohol in gas station. Okay, I'm going to pull it anyway, so, so, okay, we can discuss at that time. So, other than that, go ahead, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I will try and briefly respond. I know we had seven speakers concerning Item 2 on your agenda tonight, that's in the next portion of your agenda, for a variety of reasons that would be possibly addressed at a public hearing should you vote to ask the Planning Commission to initiate that. Mr. Steele is a little ahead of the game with his request that the city adopt through the zoning ordinance a permit fee or to allow canopies on the driveway. That process is going to take us a while. We're going to issue an RFP, bring in a consultant, and have quite an extensive public participation process, and then take it to the Planning Commission, and that would be our moment to think about changing those standards or to consider it. I, thank you, I appreciate it. We'll get, we'll get to that, but it won't be immediately. Minerva Avia asked about the BKK questions, and I will look into those documents, the August 30, 2019 CalRecycle letter, and the report that she says is referenced in that letter, and respond to her landfill questions separately after I've had a chance to look at those letters. Mr. Chris Miller asked about custodial services, which is on your agenda tonight with a staff recommendation to reduce those services. This is consistent with the direction that I've given the staff to make reductions in every single aspect of the city operation this fiscal year. I can tell you, these aren't things that I felt we wanted to do, any of them, in any of our service categories, but they were things that I thought we needed to do just because of cash flow. And so I think, believe now, eight of our employee groups have indicated a willingness to take reductions in their compensations, eight of the nine, and all of the vendors we've spoken with, and we're going through the list to find ways to scale back. We're just trying to hold our own, rebuild the reserves to the absolute minimums, we don't have to chase cash flow and worry about slow-paying vendors or not-paying employees during this COVID pandemic. I guess the reason we're doing this is a bigger-picture reason. The COVID-19 pandemic has had really far-reaching consequences which are well beyond the spread of the disease and our attempts to quarantine it. The economic impacts on the, on the city, on the businesses in the city are quite real, and the city budget just radiates that, reflects that. If I ran the world in terms of city services, I've said it repeatedly and publicly, I think city employees are our biggest asset. If I had a chance to bring the custodial services or some of our other services back in-house, I would. That's not what this is tonight. It's just a curtailment of a contract.
I got it. City Manager, I think his question regarding the number, okay, and why we have the number doesn't make sense, but I can kind of helping you, okay, to kind of put this focus, okay, the number due to coronavirus, okay, and we, a lot of activity stopped, so meaning a lot of our senior center, our Shadow Oak, we don't have anybody, so why?
Close, exactly.
Am I right?
You're right.
See, that's why you answer this about. Yeah, you go to the cora, you kind of off track. So, so the number is sent into my company, if I don't have people come to my office, I don't have the pay, I cut down to every day, okay, people to clean it up, down to maybe two day due to nobody show up, we only, so you cut down some expenditure, it's not even, nobody there, why you, what to clean up? Nothing to clean up. When you have a lot of people traffic in and out, then you need to, but, but the park, we need every day for people to park, okay, to.
And I'll report to you regarding your action at the last meeting concerning the park as part of the manager's report.
So, so the question.
Just to leave the question with Mr. Miller, I'll owe him a response.
Yeah, so, so Chris, okay, for Chris, okay, your response basically is due to we don't have activities, so we cut down the janitorial, okay, or their service, so in that way, we can save money. Am I right? Thank you so much. Okay, and any other thing you want to talk? Okay, then we move to manager report.
Under the manager's report tonight, I just had a few items to report to Council and to the community. I'm happy to announce that we've been cooperating here on the Civic Center campus with the LA County, especially the Library Department who's taking the lead for a meal program. They're going to begin now, at least through the end of the calendar year, distributing meals, seven days a week. Meals can be picked up from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, the driveway and the parking lot adjacent to the library. So I thank the library for meeting community needs during the, during the crisis. We've set up, barricaded off in accordance with the traffic engineering plan, some of the area that was previously used for street purposes on Glendora Avenue. The businesses have responded. This is a photo showing how they're open for their outdoor operations. And as mentioned earlier, we're really anxious to help our businesses in any way. I do recognize we need to be in some further dialogue with some of the businesses along this street, and we'll be doing that together with the Traffic Engineer tomorrow to try and resolve any remaining concerns. But for now, this time of year is very pleasant to be eating outdoors, and I hope people would take advantage of it. Next couple of slides are in response to Mayor Potem's request for some statistics about what progress the city is making on its homeless prevention activities. This is a year-by-year count in the count, which is, I think, always a bit questionable in terms of, since it's just a single-day count and it's once a year, but in 2017, the count was 166, almost individuals. 2018, a spike to 262, the current number of 124. We've got some good gain being made in terms of those individuals, 55 of them contact, enrolled in the county coordinated entry system, and a number of them placed into temporary motels in surrounding communities through the Project Roomkeep program. The encampments are an ongoing question. We've been continuing to try and partner with Caltrans. It's a statewide issue, and they've backed off a little in terms of cleaning up encampments on the Caltrans ride of ways. Just repeating for public emphasis, being homeless is not a crime, but the public drinking, the public urination, and the harassment behaviors are, so we're going to continue to focus law enforcement resources as appropriate. Next slide. We've got a number of partnerships that we're working on. I mentioned Caltrans on cleaning up of the freeway ride of way on an ongoing basis. We're partnering with LASSA, the Los Angeles County Homeless Services Authority, who's making weekly park visits with our City Hope team. We're working with Department of Mental Health, they're providing assistance on an as-needed basis, cooperating and partnering with our police department. I mentioned the hotel voucher program. Our code enforcement division, our public services division are assisting and cooperating and partnering on assistance with the encampment cleanups as they come. The next slide is a snapshot about estimated annual costs to address homeless prevention. We've got some Measure H money to provide a housing navigator to get people into the system. We've got $100,000 coming us through the Measure H program for the hotel voucher program. The city contributions for the Hope team at nearly a quarter million dollars, and the estimate of $125,000 a year for cleanup cost using city funds. Those are major contributions, and the city's partnering whenever we can to try to address those situations, but it remains a big problem in the community and a big expenditure in response to that. Next slide. I just wanted to make mention of the DUI checkpoint, which was held last Friday. I know you have an item on your agenda tonight, asking you to ratify a grant so we can keep this up, but on Friday eve, there were more than 1,000 cars which were screened, 28 were directed into the secondary inspection. They harvested 17 unlicensed driver citations, one suspended license citation, and conducted three field sobriety tests. I was actually pleased that the number of drunk drivers was this low, was encouraging. Wanted to follow up, next slide, next couple of slides about the ballot drop boxes. The locations for the drop boxes, which is different from the in-person polling places, are Palm View Park off Flark Ellen and the Cortez Senior Center. And then the question came up tonight with the county representative about where are the in-person voting locations. Those are Cameron Park, the Community Center, the Cortez Senior Center, and Shadow Oak. So we've got, we've got three. And then I wanted to report back to Council about the custodial services that have been reinstated per your direction at the last meeting. We've immediately begin again to do trash pickup seven days a week. We've put back in the contracted three-man crew at 40 hours a week, and the trash enclosure is being addressed on Mondays and Fridays. We're again doing all those things that we really didn't want to cut, the turf applications, the turf renovations, the mulch replenishing, and keeping the park clean, so that's been turned back on. Lastly, I wanted to make mention of the governor's order and its effect on the city that came out yesterday. They've now got a color-coordinated system of tiers, and for LA County, we are again following all of those orders. We can now reopen shopping centers, which was the one big one, at a maximum of 25% capacity, and so we think that's good news. They have not changed the order yet about reopening of hair salons or barber shops, and they're just monitoring the deaths, and the county health director is promulgating these regulations, which we are doing our best to follow. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, City Manager. And first thing I want to thanks, okay, to, okay, have our seven-day trash pickup, and I think our parks, clean park, okay, is very important, okay? This is what residents want to, they want to go to the open space and walk on the park, they don't want to see the trash all the places. Thank you so much for that. And another thing regarding the voting, okay, hopefully, we can have less relocation for people, a lot of people, including myself, I like to vote in person. I want to make sure that will be counted, so, so that's something important, too. And I think another thing regarding, anybody, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you again about the park cleanup. It's important to clean our city, and I do appreciate getting the homeless update out there for the residents. I know I would get the updates, but it's important that the residents see it, because a lot of them think that the city doesn't do enough. And actually, the city does do a lot, and the money we spend also to take care, whether it's to prevent this or take care of any situations that's out there. I know that there's, you know, sometimes residents come and/or sends us an email. I know we've, we've taken care of some issues. The vagrants that are out there committing crime, breaking into windows, vandalizing, I know it just happened here at City Hall as well, but into other businesses and home residents. The police, sometimes the police does, you know, they go out there, and if they're able to catch them in the act, they do arrest them. The problem is the state laws. They're released the same day or they're released the very next day, and it's just a vicious cycle that continues. So that's why it's very important to vote and to look into the laws that are there that's out of our control, it's, you know, the state level, so that's why it's very important to vote, because a lot of times, they blame the City Council or the city, oh, city, you know, they blame us, but they don't understand, it's not in our control. There's things that I personally would love to do, but I can't, because there's rules and laws that sometimes is against what we'd like. So that I do appreciate, and I just, please vote, so that makes a big difference. And that's about it, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Okay, I forgot one thing quickly, okay? And regarding the open airs dining, okay, on the Glendora, okay, the area, I know next-door neighbor have some issue, and I think we contacted them, okay, and we tried to accommodate, we want all the business, okay, we, not only the restaurant business, we, okay, hopefully City can kind of talk to the, okay, we cannot please everybody, but we want everybody to work together. Our job is try to have all the business can survive during this very, very tough time. So if we can kind of accommodate, okay, the next-door neighbor, okay, their issue, and I think everybody can live peacefully together. And I talked to the owner, I told them, okay, when we have more traffic, okay, more people come to dine, it will help everybody's business in their neighborhood, okay? At the same time, we need clean up, okay, please, okay? And if the theater, everyone doesn't want to do it, then we have to do it, then we bill them, we want to make sure they pay us, but we need to clean it up. And other City Council, anybody want to say something? Oh, really? Okay, sorry to cover everything, okay? So, but anyway, okay, and let's go to the consent calendar, okay? And I already mentioned I want to pull number two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number four.
Number four, okay, and anybody, number six, okay? And any, you okay with the rest? So, number two from me, okay, and then number four, a consideration proposed service agreement between, okay, number four from Johnson, okay? And the number six from Casiano. Okay, two, four, and six. Two, four, and six. Okay, and any other item Council want to pull to discuss? Okay, if none, okay, I'm going to, okay, who want to make the motion to approve Agenda number one, three, five, seven, eight? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion to approve. Okay, motion to approve Agenda and from Councilman Casiano. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. So, okay, and a roll call, please.
Councilman Costelanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, and motion approved five-zero for Agenda one, three, five, seven, and eight. And then number two regarding, okay, the, okay, the B and wine in the gas station. And I against from the beginning because I think there's two issue. It's why is a fairness issue, and second issue is we really in West Covina, we saturate a lot of, okay, liquor and liquor store, okay? I don't think we want to become like all the city have liquor store all over places. I think West Covina is better than that. And we hope, okay, like last time I mentioned, a gas station is selling gas, okay? If they want to sell B and wine, they don't sell gas. They just have a convenience store selling anything they want, like a liquor store. But, okay, so if they're selling gas, please sell gas. I think they can make a lot of profit just selling gas. That's, that's my argument. So I hope, okay, the other city council can think about this, okay? During this pandemic, it's really not a time to increase all this consumption of alcohol. People already depressed enough. So I understand, even I'm very poor business, but I'm thinking about when it's not really not a time. I hope my colleague can really think about this, okay? And I understand, okay, they have a problem come, but, but again, I hope, okay, and city council can reconsider it, okay, regarding this issue, okay? And, okay, my question is, how many station, okay, will benefit for if we pass?
In terms of the number of stations that are licensed currently in the city, there are 21 service stations or gas stations within the city of West Covina. All of them have convenience stores currently.
So, so 21 with a convenience store with gas station?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and we approve is more than 2,000 square feet, right?
According to the research, one of the previous proposals was to set a minimum square footage of 2,000 square feet, but that has not obviously been acted upon, but yes.
So, so for this approval is for the gas station with convenience store, okay, and the size is 2,000 square feet and higher. Am I right? No, no? So this way is, so this way we go back to any gas station, so 21 gas station can have a chance to apply if we approve selling B and wine?
Well, maybe, Mr. Mayor, if I could, a little bit of background, there would be, if the council moves forward on this, there would be a public hearing by the Planning Commission. They would make a recommendation back to the council, so they may establish a minimum square footage of 2,000 square feet, but I think that would be to be determined by the planning.
So tonight approval will be, and 21 gas station convenience store have a chance, okay, to sell B and wine?
As of tonight, correct.
Okay, and then if we approve, okay, and then they were sent to the planning and to planning, okay, committee to look into it.
Correct.
Set the guideline, okay? And so basically, 21 gas station with convenience store in entire West Covina boundary.
Correct.
Okay, and other city council have?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, JD, I'm not going to hide behind a mask. I'm not.
Behind a mask? My safety? Or don't want to explain to you? You want to go back up?
You know what? I've been talking to a lot of people since back then. In District One, where I represent, I understand 10 years ago, they had 700 signatures throughout the city. I'm representing District One. Everybody I talked to in District One, they have one homelessness, county fire. Those are my residents, those are the ones that I am representing, but since we are in districts. I have to listen to them. Those are the ones that will be voting for me in office or voting me out of office. And I've been out there talking to them since the first of the year. And these are the concerns. And one person I talked to, I went up to his house and knocked on his door, and he said, "Mr. Johnson, I have one issue with you." He said, "Myself? My daughter and my son will be voting for you, but we have one issue." And I asked him at the issue, "The alcohol in the gas station?" He said, "Yes." He said, "But you know what? I think of a concern, I won't vote for you because..." He drinks beer, and he says he can see sometimes where he's gone. He stopped the gas, he got home and he gets some beer, so he had to go back out. And he said it would be a convenience for him. So issue is that I talked to residents, residents never brought up the issue about alcohol and gas stations. Homelessness and county fire is the two biggest concerns. So those are the reason why I've re-looked at this issue, and I figured that 10 years ago, 700 people had an issue with it. Today's age, those 700 people don't have the same issue with it. Times have changed in 10 years. And yes, my recommendation, I will send them for public caring on this. So I would like to make a motion to send the Planning Department for public caring.
So everybody knows that last time I spoke in regards to this alcohol, I said I personally was 50/50. I could care less which side it goes. I didn't really see, you know, the very big issue because of the things that, the criteria that they put in place. Because I didn't like that selling one can of alcohol, you know, if it's a pack, because I've seen that, I work in LA. And I leaned my 1% to the no. As for those who hit Councilman Johnson for receiving contribution, I received the same contribution recently from the same person, yet I still said no. So, you know, I just, please don't hit him with that, Councilman Johnson, for that. As the former Mike, the former councilman, Mike Spence, I mean, he did say because of the lowered contribution, that you can't buy my vote for $500. So I just wanted to make that out there, that, you know, those who hit him with that, I got the same contribution, yet I still said no. So this is a personal choice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. Okay, yeah, go ahead, okay, and Councilman Casiano. By the way, we already have a motion, okay, to approve, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm actually going to second that motion to send it back to the Planning Commission for discussion. I think one thing that could be explored and discussed is using a conditional use permit to set forth the rules required to move forward on any kind of permit like this. And also, like Mr. Robert Torres said, if we want to be fair, we offer it to everyone, and I would be in favor of looking at offering this right to all gas stations through conditional use permit if, once the Planning Commission reviews it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Casiano. Okay, any other comment or?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Jessica.
I was in favor of making the change to the ordinance less than a year ago, and I am still in favor of it. We hear a lot that, you know, we have so many places that sell, yet I have yet to hear anybody complain about restaurants now being able to basically put alcohol, wine, and everything else in to-go cups, and everybody gets to drive away, yet the world is ending if we sell closed containers at a gas station. So I am in favor of sending this back to the Planning Commission. I liked some of their recommendations for size limits, you know, what type of facility and gas station would be allowed to do it. So I would like to them to address both options. And also, one of the things that they did a lot of research on less than a year ago is the law enforcement aspect of it. So I would ask that the city possibly put up that information on the website on what the law enforcement response to this idea was less than a year ago. And also, maybe we can get some stats on what's been going on with DUIs and everything else in the city of West Covina since restaurants began to be allowed to do to-go alcohol. And see if the stats match what would happen if we allowed it in gas stations or might happen if we allowed it in gas stations. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you so much, Councilman Shoemaker. Yeah, you have more thing to say? Okay, go ahead.
I do appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Shoemaker. I like to see all the facts. I know prior when I looked into this, I wanted to see all the criteria. I did speak to LAPD because I know there's, you know, certain areas, especially on areas that I work, there's like a drink at the park. And I know some, they mentioned gas stations or even just alcohol, just alcohol in general near schools, near parks. I'd like to see those stats, and that kind of also helps with the general thing, what goes on in the city and just in general. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. If no other comment, I'm going to have any other, nope, roll call, please?
Just to recap, we have a motion made by Councilman Johnson.
Okay, a motion made by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Casiano.
Yes. Councilman Costelanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
I still say no.
Mayor Wu.
Nope, okay, and motion approved three-two, and we go to Agenda number four.
Okay.
Number four, Johnson, okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reason why I brought this up, we hear so much about being strapped on the city. Why can't we do that billing ourselves instead of having an outside agency do it?
It's on, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, and citizens, we could do it if that's something that we wanted to look into do, but we'd have to hire staff to be dedicated to that. I think at this time, it's more efficient. We have a company that works with Medicare, all the insurance companies. They're experts in the industry. They're more efficient in doing it. When it was done years ago, I don't think we brought in the amount of money we bring in now. It's just more efficient using a contract company.
Any other question? Yeah, go ahead.
I do have a question. I see we were able to negotiate a decrease from 4.5% of billings to 3.9%. 3.9% is actually a really good deal for medical billings. Who negotiated that?
It was myself, working with the company, saying we've been a longstanding customer of theirs. We have a good track record of billing, and their work they have to do for us is not as much as they have to do to other cities that have this low of percentage, so we should have been offered that, too, and they agreed.
I'd like to say good job on that. That's probably just the momentum they've got. They know the systems. We've got a system in place to make it work. But if I could help answer the question for Councilmember Johnson, I think if we were to hire in-house staff with benefits, or even if it were part-time, I think it would be difficult to come close to that 3.9%.
I agree. The money we pay them of the roughly $100,000, probably be more, a couple, two, three staffmen would be to do it.
Well, good job. Thank you, Chief Capelli.
And do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion approved by Councilman Casiano and second by Councilman Johnson. Any other discussion? If none, okay, roll call, please?
Councilman Costelanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, and motion approved five-zero, and Agenda number six pulled by Councilman Casiano. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief Bell. Chief Bell's coming up.
Yeah, go ahead, chief.
Okay, well, this is an OTS grant that the police department has been receiving for several years now. Back a decade ago, obviously DUIs and DUI-related accidents were up. I believe the stats were about 30 deaths a day. Since then, it has been reduced drastically by at least a third, but DUI continues to be a problem out in our society. So this OTS grant, what it allows us to do is to do saturations like we did last Friday, where we try to cartel and catch those people that are violating that, that type of activity. This grant is money that's given from the government. It's the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and they provide every city a measure of money to deal with it. What it does for us is it pays for overtime, pays for our employees to go out there and enforce it, and it is strictly for the safety of our residents while they're on the, on the highway.
Thank you, Chief Bell. I just wanted to discuss it, give the audience and the public at home an opportunity to know about this, make sure they understand what it is. I think we had a very successful event on Friday, and I'm happy to see we'll get $57,000 to help continue these efforts. So I'd like to give kudos, props, and a shout-out to our PD, and thank you, guys, for what you do. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, chief?
Yes.
Okay, just want to say one thing, welcome back. Okay, you look marvelous. Okay, so you look good and healthy and a good chief, okay? And other city council, any question?
No.
Oh, but thank you, chief. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, and thank you again, chief.
I'll second.
Who want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, okay, you second. Okay, and motion approved, a motion moved by Councilman Casiano and second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, and roll call, please.
Councilman Costelanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
And aye, and motion approved five-zero. Then we're done with consent calendar, we go to the AB 1234 conference and meeting, number whatsoever. Okay, we go to the city council request, report, and study. And I think you have something, right? Go ahead.
Yes, Mother Mayor, it's more of a council request. I'd like to request to have our city help our children in West Covina with partnering with the school district and offering our city facility as a distance learning site. I've seen our kids struggle due to their home is not a conducive environment, learning environment, and the kids, the parents, they all need help. At work, I've already started that, and it makes a big difference to the families there. I'd like to see, to help our families here in our city of West Covina, so I'd like to move forward and get that going.
And I want to concur to support this, Mother Mayor, because under children stay home, some of the, okay, property or location is not really, because they maybe have a lot of kid, okay, and trembling to each other. So, so we see, look into what we can provide. We have a lot of space, okay, we can have them to social distance, and we got 20,000 masks, so we can provide masks for them, right? So we got everything, and I think the school where we reimburse, okay, some of the issues, so we can talk about that, see what we can kind of work with the school to provide a facility for them, okay, to use this kind of remote study, and then I think with that, they can be more focused. We cannot, okay, lose, okay, the generation because of pandemic, and they, they have to, they cannot go to school, but we hope we can gradually and open to go back to school. But in the meantime, see city with facility to help the school, that's why you, I want, so we, we can do it. Yeah, go ahead.
I know at work, because we had to go through our meetings and so forth, but it's, from what I was informed, it's reimbursed through the CARES Act. And I can personally speak as a parent, looking into the Zoom meetings and these Google meets with the teacher. I do, the teachers, I give them a lot of credit. To keep the students' attention in the classroom is already hard, but in, outside of it, it's even tougher. And so, you know, I've seen other children there, one spinning on their chair, the other one, and I felt bad for that child, is on the floor, living room floor tight with a baby crawling and crying, and the teacher had to say, you know, can you please mute your mic? You know, they're living conditions, and I, you know, I've been there, so I know this is, I want to push, and some of them don't have AC, and it's just a lot of difficulties. We had parents who didn't even speak English that, you know, needed translation, how to even work the system. So I know we've already started ours at work, and it's effective. Prior to this whole, during the whole pandemic, my facility hosted the emergency childcare for the essential workers. It worked well. The, then we did the summer day camp, COVID, it worked well. Now we're doing the distance learning program, so, you know, I did say why the teachers couldn't do it, and we had to do it, you know, we partnered with LAUSD, but I do want to see, I don't want our children here in our LAUSD. But I do want to see, I don't want our children here in our city to suffer, especially those who don't have those resources. So please, thank you.
Maybe, maybe city can have you as some kind of supervisor, to try to help them to set it up. This is your, have all the experience. But
Be more than welcome to help.
I don't think anybody against this, right? So would you please, we, okay, have a council request to help talk to the superintendent, see, we have a seven school, see what they need, any assistance. So we communicate with them, because maybe they say no need. But again, we really want to help, okay, to work with them. Okay, and any other city council, male, okay, and Council Johnson? Okay, go ahead, Jessica, go ahead.
I wanted to follow up on a discussion that we had had quite a while ago now, before COVID. Everything seems before COVID. And that's regarding our lobbyists. I had requested that we go out for an RFQ on this issue as the legislative session is ending, and most cities and entities use lobbyists like to, if they're going to get their lobbyists, or at least go out to RFQ before the new legislative season starts. And so I want to again request that we do that, since the new legislative session will start at the beginning of December. We're already getting late on doing it. I would also request, once again, that our lobbyists come to City Hall and give us a report on what happened this session. There were a lot of bills related to COVID, ADUs, homelessness, transportation, that will be of, you know, grave concern to us and of interest. And also, we need to start thinking about what our legislative priorities will be in the upcoming. So additionally, quite a while ago, asked that we have an item to discuss permit parking in the city. We have all gotten a lot of complaints from residents who can't park on their own streets, or because Covina has permit parking, there are trucks that park over into the city of West Covina to avoid their permit parking. And so I wanted to circle back around to that issue. And so those are my two for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Shoemaker, Councilwoman Shoemaker. Okay, and I don't think anybody against that, right? So, yeah, okay, so go ahead. Okay, would you please, City Manager, to do a research and see, to get a report for Councilwoman Shoemaker, okay, to look into it. And then, and I think Councilman Johnson, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to give a thank you to Sue Agino. Yesterday, she had probably about at least a dozen young adults help her clean up the cane parking lot over there. They ended up with probably over 20-some bags of trash. I know, because I picked it up and took it to the yard and got rid of them. So I just want to say thank you for everything they did. I know all those young adults getting out there and spending their time helping out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilman Johnson. And any other council member want to make a statement? If none, do, okay, again, I want to thanks, okay, the residents showing up in person. Sarah, thank you so much to showing up, okay, and see you, see you next time again, okay? And say something to us, hopefully positive. Okay, and, yeah, you're always positive, yeah. And I want to thank the City Manager and the City Management Team, okay, and the staff, okay, and for their dedication to help us during this pandemic, during this time. I think everything looked like opening up, and everything looked pretty positive for the city to continue to operate, and a lot of confidence coming back. And I want to see my colleagues, city council, to work together, so, okay, to move on all the issue and smoothly, and with all the cooperation, and all the speaker, and including, okay, have them to participate, the government. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay, and so, okay, and meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, and have a good night and be safe.